All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. December 3 regular meeting of the Uba City Council. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, then we can please stand for invocation by Mr. From George and then followed by posting of the colors and pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Robin Bertagni if she would not mind.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we lift up this moment, Father to you. We thank you for this time that we can be here, Father, to serve. Father, we pray for those that do serve in uniform. Lord, we think of our police department, we think of our fire department. We lift those up to you that serve. We pray for a hedge of protection over them. Lord, we pray for tonight as the council meets. Lord, we just pray for your guidance and direction as they lead. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robin. Just so everybody knows, the meeting, from what I understand, is being livestreamed and I think it's one of those Youtubes or YouTube. Okay. We are going to go move on here with public communication. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Written requests, members of the public submit any written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Will normally be allotted five minutes to speak. I understand these two were came in today. And is that true? Okay. And that is it. I do have two speaker cards here. Let's go with Phil Traynor first. Excuse me, three speaker cards. Thank you.
Hi, iPad. I think, I think most of you people know me. I'm not here to be obnoxious by any means, but I read, I looked at the YouTube. I had three people phone me and ask me if I'd taken a look at the YouTube on the last meeting. I looked at it yesterday and I looked at it this morning again. This is what I would like you to consider. I've got six sentences that I'm going to read and I think you should be able to read them all in three minutes. I listened to the letter written to the city by Manny that he'd be allowed to delay his promotion to mayor for next year, until next year. He says his request is personal. However, he refers to problems with the council members and apologizes to them, but we were the ones that put him in office. We, the citizens, voted Manny into office consequently. The other members of the council shouldn't be allowed to vote him out of the position that he was going to have. I believe it should have been up to the public. I'm not here to make people whatever you want to say about it, but I believe that the public, I think that Manny should either explain what happened or did he lock horns with somebody and couldn't make his way out of it, but I would like to see him stay on. I would like to have seen him win his mayor. But whatever you do, I am one of the very few people that probably get up and gripe about this type of thing. And I do not want people to be phoning me and saying, Phil, what do you think? But I don't think anything anymore. But I'm one of those idiots that get up and speak my mind. So Manny, you got my feelings. I think you should stay in office. Thank you. Three minutes.
One more.
I've got one minute left. Well, that's good. Anyway, I, as I say, I think that the public should be allowed to decide who the next mayor will be. You've got a hell of a job to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Phil. And I see Elaine coming on up. Mr. Preston Dickinson, if you can cue yourself up, sir, after Elaine here.
Okay. First thing I'm going to say is I agree with what he said, but that brings me to another One of you on that board probably remembers it because that was back when you were employed. But the rest of you, you may not remember that there was a chance by the citizens to change the city council, to set up having city council members for each district because back in those days, we had all of them living in one area. So I honestly support this and I really think that the city should look at this in the future. In fact, the Chico Enterprise Record published a huge article about they're going to sue them if they don't set it up this way. So maybe you need to look at it in the future and look at dividing things up so that we know that we are actually represented. I know I'm represented because I live in the area that a lot of you do, but I really think it needs to change. And in most cities, way down in Stockton even, the mayor is elected separately. So maybe we need to really look at this. And I'll give you the article because I don't think any of you have read it, but I'll give it to her and she could share it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Elaine. Mr. Dickinson.
Good evening, chamber members. My name is Preston Dickinson. I'm an independent contractor with AT&amp;T and I recently, I cover about 10 counties up in Northern California and I work with Alice Perez. She's a Director of External Affairs with AT&amp;T. I retired several years ago and have the wonderful experience of being back and doing what I did when I retired. So I do the external affairs for these 10 counties from Yuba and Sutter up to the Oregon border. I wanted to introduce myself. I've given you business cards. I wear several hats, but my, I like to just tell folks, if you have any issues with AT&amp;T that your constituents or residents bring to you, feel free to get ahold of me. I'm located in Chico and I will be happy to help. I did also want to let you know that we are working with William Zhao over in Public Works on a proposal to put a small cell in Yuba City, which is basically a faster service that is mobile service, which will help with capacity issues where we have identified capacity problems and it will increase, offer very high speeds. So those are the things that we're working on right now and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them and otherwise I'll be reaching out to you over the next couple of months just to have more personal one-on-one time to tell you what I do.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. That was three of three speaker cards I have. Would anybody else who have not filled out a card care to say anything at this time, whether it's on or off the agenda? Anybody else after Tom? Come on down, cue yourself up. It's all good.
Good evening. My name's Thomas Burns. I wanted to remind people of the great California ripoff program tonight. So I think it's good to always bring that forward. So back in 2006, I bought a truck for business and it's a small truck, but it's, it's a medium-sized truck, a Freightliner, and it's a diesel truck. So I decided to take on the task of making those payments. So I made payments on it for five years, 1,400 bucks a month. Now the state, now this truck is, it's got 45,000 miles on it. It's an excellent truck. It's got a Mercedes-Benz engine and it runs clean. But the state of California has pretty much dictated that it's no longer roadworthy. So they stole my truck from me. That's what they did. And I wanted to remind everybody of the thieving program going on in the state of California and many, many, many other things.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Anybody else care to say anything? On or off the agenda? It's all good. All right?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a short statement. First of all, I'd like to thank Phil and Elaine for their comments. I really appreciate them for all the other folks out there in TV land. I understand your concerns. This is a personal, personal for me, but I will tell you, I haven't done anything criminal or immoral. I don't have any fatal disease or anything like that. I do hold myself to high standards, though I have not met that standard. And so I want to focus on continuing to do the best for our community and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve as your mayor in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Manny. It's kind of interesting. This is typically a more jovial atmosphere for this meeting, but it does add something different because it's unprecedented. It's never really happened before, but here we are. We're going through it, business as usual. And well, I'm sure this council will step up as we always had and adjust accordingly and move forward for the benefit of everybody out there. So thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, according to our agenda, we have presentations to outgoing mayor, who apparently is me. So we are all going to go up here for a second. Okay, Mr. Mayor, come up front.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and hand this to you, your proclamation. And Sean Harris, mayor, 2018-2019. Sean Harris has been successful, had a successful term as mayor of the city of Yuba City and therefore it is the right and appropriate and his personal contributes by recognizing, including serving on the following regional committees. He was on the, he's on the Beal Air Force Military Liaison, the Regional Water Authority, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, and the Yuba-Sutter Regional Arts Council. As the presiding member of the council, accomplishments include, but are not limited to, establish priorities and goals for 2019-20. This is in public safety, financial stability, organizational structure, business friendly, enhanced partnerships, quality of life, infrastructure, infrastructure, and homeless and vagrancy. Form special committees. Calpers Unfunded Liability Workshop hosted by Mayor Harris and Councilmember Shaw. Budget Committee, Mayor Harris, Councilmember Shaw. Master Tax Exchange Committee, Councilmembers Boom Garden and Shaw. Homeless Committee, myself and Councilmember Espendola. Held special workshops regarding homeless with Sutter County Board Supervisors. Water and wastewater, transportation, Budget 101, Bog Stewart Master Plan, economic development, Harbor Pacific Plan, impact fees, and growth policies. Being a busy man. Yes. Some projects completed are installation of pickleball courts at San Brandon Park, purchasing new emergency generators for the corp yard, upgrading auto vigil equipment in our council chambers, partnering, partnering with Regional Arts Council to sponsor the painting of utility boxes, partnering, partnering with Sutter County, I'm having problems with partnering, with Sutter County to help fund the library innovation center, authorized the constructions of Phase Two of the Feather River Parkway Improvement Project, authorized the development of urban forest management plan and tree inventory, supported AB 430, the Camp Fire Housing Assistance Act, approved the Franklin Avenue Improvement Project, completed the police department parking lot expansion project, purchased rectangular rapid flashing beacons for the school crossing improvement projects. Community events. The Sydney partnered with other organizations to bring back the annual, the annual community Fourth of July fireworks display. Celebrated 30 years of friendship with Yuba City's sister city, Torre de Japan, repaired and rededicated the flagpole on Pluma Street, renamed the Veterans Memorial Park to the Bob House Veterans Memorial Park in honor of our former mayor, Bob Barkhouse, participated in the 40th Annual Seek Parade, held the ribbon cutting for the opening of the completed portion of the Fishery Bridge. Organizations in development. Hired the new city manager, Michael Rock, our new city attorney, Shannon Schaffin, allocated funding for our new police officer to specific address homeless and vagrancy issues, successfully negotiated new agreements with the city bargaining groups. Now therefore, by its resolve, that we, the Yuba City Council of the city of Yuba City, do hereby recognize Sean Harris for his commitment and contribute to the city of Yuba City as mayor, so proclaimed on the third day of December 2019, city of Yuba City, county of Sutter, and the state of California. Congratulations, Mayor Harris.
All right. Thank you very much. Your honorary. Yeah, there you. Oh. There's closing comments. Would you like to do it behind or up here?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Well, I made these, hold on a second. All right. Well, thank you all very much. I'm reading that and that's just a, you know, I'm just one of five and everyone up here is very busy all the time. And yeah, we played, I played a role in some of those things and it's, it's our honor to do so. I do have a couple of thoughts here that I put together. I missed almost all that stuff. I didn't really take notes throughout the year, but definitely this has been a very extremely busy year for all of us up here. I remember about a month or two into it, I get a call from my friend here, you told me this is only going to be X number of hours a month. It's like triple that or a week, I mean, right? And so I had to do a lot of coffee buying to make up for that. But we, we had a lot of things handed to us that were kind of extraordinary. It's been a year full of challenges and changes and tough decisions and milestones for our city. And the main thing I want to do at least first, I'll just thank my family who are here up front, with the exception of these two right here. They think they are right here, but they're stealing the chair. You may as well be. But we have my mom, her husband Pete right here, my daughter Bethany, my son Blake, my dad Greg right there, and of course, my son and my son Brandon and his family are watching via livestream from Diaz Air Force Base in Texas right now. And we have Cameron right there looking in the, into the little tablet there. He joined the family a little over a month ago. So thank you all for everything. I know it's sometimes when Dad can't be there as much as I'd like to be, you step up and you, and you roll with it and I appreciate that. So I'm definitely proud to have played a part of all of this and thank the council for the opportunity to serve you and you as your mayor. And 2019 was definitely extraordinary in that it presented an inordinate amount of administrative-related tasks to be addressed. They all took a great deal of time, a lot of research and scheduling and from what I understand is probably an unprecedented amount of special council meetings. We definitely didn't, don't shy away from that. We discussed early on that one of our collective frustrations with government is how long things take and if we happen to have an idea or something that needs to be done a day or two after a council meeting, we're not really into waiting for two more weeks just for propriety's sake, so we'll call a meeting. And we've done that many, many times and I think we've proven that and it's worked out well for us. Our main function here as a council is to set policy for the city and that in turn contributes in setting the tone to be carried throughout our organization. This council has proven time and again that it is dedicated and driven to do so by doing the right thing for the right reasons, even when it involves those long hours and tough decisions, sometimes very tough decisions. I'm proud of that. I think we all should be and I'm proud of what I've worked with you guys because it's, it's not easy, but you got to do it and we did. We began 2019 by making one of the best decisions we made, in my opinion, as a, as a council, and that is to appoint Diana Langley as our interim city manager. Definitely a good call there. So Diana, I can't even express, we could have a whole meeting about you and our, my respect and our respect for you and the job you did and the leadership you provided and we really appreciate it. So with Diana's input, her leadership and her experience, we tackled many other challenges, including a realized and anticipated turnover, excuse me, of three positions in our executive team. Recruiting and hiring our new city manager, sitting over there, Mr. Michael Rock. Our budget process and the discussion surrounding our beloved contract with Recollege Yuba-Sutter. That was always fun. But the role of your mayor is simply that. It's, it's a role and one of my main roles that it takes to move things forward, but everyone has their own role and nothing could have been accomplished or possible without the hard work and dedication of every, every city employee. And today, I think, is your night. Tonight, I want to publicly, wherever the TV camera is right now, we, I want to celebrate our city staff because I tell you what, they work so hard and they're so professional from every, every level, from Mr. Rock and Shannon over there, all the way down to the newest employee. Dedicated, dedicated people and I really appreciate, we really appreciate the hard work you do. Excuse me. We, I want to recognize also our finance director, Robin Bertagni, who retires soon. She's the one that was really enthusiastic about the pledge of allegiance today. So that was good. She's retiring this month after 21 years, very well deserved. And I tell you what, you have a very good replacement here in Spencer Morrison stepping up to fill Robin's very big shoes, but Spencer, we're looking forward to working with you too and congratulations to you in your new role. And Robin, congratulations to your, to your retirement. Where's Rob Landon? Rob Landon, our fire chief, he, our police chief stepped up as fire chief. So basically that becomes a public safety director, I believe is what we gave him. Stepped up. He took it without hesitation and doing a fine job. And so, Rob, thank you very much for that. The other, and I could go on and on all the way down the line, but I'm going to stick with the E-team for now. We do have a yet-to-be-filled position at Development Services. We're looking forward to meeting that new person. A lot of, definitely a lot of work to do there, but that's definitely something that's going to be exciting and we have an opportunity to really make some positive difference in streamlining processes in our, in our city. I also want to thank and recognize, and I can't go everybody name by name, some of you are here today, saw Tony, but all the members of our city boards and commissions, if they step up on a volunteer basis and can play a very important role to keep the city moving forward and providing input and direction and their opinions on, there's Tony right there. And we really appreciate that. So I want to make a point of recognizing that. A little bit more on our, on our city staff, I tell you, I can even say so on a personal level, even when it comes down to, what did I have here? A, I had a problem tree in my, in my yard. I got bit by a feral cat, all the way down to signing Cameron up for basketball. Every time I would call, they'd be very professional, very, very courteous and helpful, above expectations. And I mean, every time that I would do that. And I really appreciate that. And I didn't, I didn't tell them who I was either, by the way. So it's all good. I mean, it was like a secret chopper almost unintentionally, but they, they're really, do a great job and I really appreciate that and want to publicly revisit that again. It's also important, as a member of our council, we represent our city externally. We've done so on, on a trip to Washington DC during the cap-to-cap annual trip. I happen to have the opportunity to do so through the Beal Military Liaison Commission, advocating for Beal Air Force Base at the Pentagon, primarily focusing on reciprocity between spouse, spouses and then other housing issues for Beal. And also in our state Capitol down as there as a member of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, which is a very, I think, a critical presence that we have down there to be represented as far as getting funding for our area specifically regarding mobility and transportation issues. I also locally here, I had the honor of serving as chairman of the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, which is very squared away, run by Michael Bissette and a very dedicated board as well, to where we're working on 200-year flood protection here in Yuba City, focused on our west, west Feather River levee, eventually moving down to the bypass, working on the Orville Wildlife Area as well. A lot of projects there, very busy organization and they're doing a great job and I was happy to be a part of that. We've done our very best over the last year to hear the voice of our residents, not only to be out there, but actually to listen, but then act on that. Was mentioned before on this proclamation here that we had in meeting regard of the powers unfunded liability. I'm proud of that and thank you, Dave, for your professionalism and your participation in that. Thank you, Phil, for the suggestion and Elaine for your participation and Pat, everybody who shows up, I really appreciate that. We may or may not solve, you know, find the golden goose, however, as a community, we came together and we're going to put some recommendations down to Sacramento and try to get some things done. Even yesterday, we had a meeting regarding impact fees of local developers. Why do we have that? Because we want to hear from the developers. We actually do care. We want to work and it's going to take some work to make a difference in that. So we can be truly demonstrate that we are business friendly so we can get some projects moving here in our city. Collectively, we've all spent a great deal of time out in the community, interacting with the public and developing relationships and many of those on a personal level and still others are professionally. We enjoy, in my opinion, excellent relationships with all of our representatives in Washington DC, Sacramento, and all of our local municipalities. There's rumor out there that we don't get along and I tell you what, I don't, I don't see it. And if there was a rumor, I think we'd probably change that dialogue because it's, it's clear that we, we all want the same thing and that's the betterment of Yuba-Sutter. Not that we all have responsibility here in Yuba City, but for the collective good. I really believe that that is the case with our elected officials and our community leaders out there. And we have others like relationships with Beal Air Force Base, even Rick Ross and the, the head guy out at Venice Health in Marysville, very, very positive gentleman, very professional gentleman, and we're happy to have him and his staff, very professional staff, partnering with them as far as healthcare for our residents. So developing these relationships, it's important that we understand that as politicians and just as community members, that not only to improve our efficiency, but to work on relationships within the council so we can collectively be able to hear you and really hear you. It helps us as your representatives and especially when we go to establish, our main job, establishing policy, goals and priorities. While we may not all, well, we, we won't always agree, but and that's just the way it is. We've all been in the one zone, two zone and three zone, if you will, and a lot of times it's, we have unanimous votes, but that is not taken personal because that's why there's five of us. That's, that is the process, that is what we have to deal with and we don't take it personally. We do so with respect of each other's opinions and we do so with professionalism. And that's, you know, it's a, it's a nice thing to be able to sit here publicly and be able to say that and mean it because it makes such a huge difference. We don't have a lot of contention up here. Again, we don't necessarily always agree all the time, but that's okay. And we roll with it and continue our eye on the bigger picture. It's hard to believe three years have gone by. Still have one more year on the term, but it's, it's amazing how fast it goes once it's over. During the middle of it, especially in the first couple of months of this year, it was pretty interesting. But we do okay. I'm going to conclude. I don't want to take too much time. I thought this was going to be about three minutes. I think I may have gone a little bit longer, but I hope I haven't forgotten anyone or anything. If I did, I can't go through everything, but it certainly wasn't intentional. But my main thing here is I want to, I want to thank my family. I want to thank my fellow council members and I want to thank city staff for all the hard work and dedication that you've done. I know there's been a lot of uncertainty that comes with change, not only mayor, but city manager and then three positions in the executive team. There's, and it become, it's human nature to speculate, right? And becomes, people become uneasy in not knowing what's going on. And becomes, people become uneasy in not knowing what's going on. I want to make a point of recognizing that, that our city staff and our leaders in our city staff have shown that leadership to their staff below. And they've endured that speculation, that uncertainty, and we weathered through it successfully, I think. We might still have a little bit of work to go, but it's important that I think we recognize and acknowledge the fact that they, that's not easy. And we appreciate it. I sincerely thank all of you for the opportunity to contribute to our city as your mayor. And, you know, as your mayor and as a council member and as a member of our community here for what, you know, the rest of the world may know as Yuba City, but what we all fondly know as home. And I appreciate that. And thank you very much for the opportunity. That's it. Thank you. Now we have number five, election of the new mayor. So may I open up nominations for the new mayor for 20, latter part of 19 into 2020?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is a great honor. I would like to nominate Sean Harris for mayor 2019, 2020.
You?
I'll second.
All right. We have a first and a second that I'd go another round. Do we, all those in favor? Can we have a, actually, let's do a roll call, please.
Did we have a second on that?
Yes, we did.
Right here.
I'm sorry, Mark. Okay, roll call. Vice Mayor Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Yes.
Councilmember Espendola?
Come back to me.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
I humbly accept and thank you both.
And Councilmember Espendola.
Yes, but with a discussion on the aspect of vice mayor. We go to that one next.
So would you rather prefer to be no?
I said yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. We have unanimous. Thank you very much. So now, we will go on to, I'm supposed to take my new seat, which I just did.
Stand up and sit down.
Stand up and sit down. And then we go to election of vice mayor. So we have now opened up nominations for vice mayor.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would nominate Councilmember Boomgarden.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Hi.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Espendola?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
And Councilmember Boomgarden.
Humbly, yes. Thank you.
All right. Very well. Thank you very much for all that. Congratulations, sir. Welcome. All right. Do we have any comments from council members?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
You did a fantastic job of, and of talking about what was accomplished. And I think that I just have a few things I would like to say as well. I want to acknowledge the actions of Councilman Cardoza on several fronts. Number one, helping a rookie councilperson. There was numerous times when you provided guidance and, you know, prodded me, hey, this is, you need to do this, or consider doing that. And I really appreciate that. And I appreciate, I appreciate the mentorship. Same thing with you, Mr. Mayor, even though you, you sort of suckered me. By, by, not, not, I don't think it was intentional, maybe it was, on the full disclosure of the time commitment. I'm making light of something. But thank you. To Councilwoman Shaw and Councilwoman Espendola, my rookie colleagues, thank you guys and Cal for your support and friendship. And thanks to all of you for all the conversations legal that we have when we, you know, when things come up. There's this thing called the Brown Act that most of you are probably aware of, which hampers a lot of communication. It's well-intended, but it does sometimes cause difficulty when it comes to decision-making. And we were instructed very early on by our city attorney, Shannon, in the, in the ins and outs of the Brown Act. But we're able to have those one-on-one conversations and keep it to a specific thing without that. And the camaraderie that Mayor Harris talked about and the support is truly appreciated. I'll only take a few more minutes. Obviously, need to thank my, my wife, my family, as Mayor Harris mentioned. Phone calls, texts, meetings, they come at all hours of the day and night. Again, not complaining, but just recognizing the patience that, that the family shows when, when you're out at Thanksgiving dinner or something and, and something comes up. It's all part of the job and I appreciate the patience. Like to publicly thank my employer, John Miller, former councilperson. It, this takes, you know, if you're going to do this right, here's a theme, it does take some time. And he's not here tonight. I hope he watches this. But the company that I work for is extremely supportive in loaning me or lending me to the city of Yuba City. And I think I need to let him know that. Also, along with Mayor Harris, you know, the city staff, some of these folks I worked with, some are new folks. And I can't, I used to be impressed, but I'm even more impressed today. The customer service, the commitment to the job, the commitment to the community is beyond even what I experienced when I worked here. And it's comforting to know that on a day-to-day basis, the folks that we employ here at the city are taking care of the citizens that we serve. Very, very appreciative of them. And as Mayor Harris mentioned, their patience through change. This council has experienced unprecedented change. I was a city employee for 30 years and never saw the amount of change that has occurred in 2019 that collectively has been successfully navigated. There was a mention about regional partnerships. This was one of my goals coming in. Not to say that the partnerships were, were, were poor, they just needed to be enhanced. And very quickly, we were able to do that with the county, both sides of the river, culminating in a fireworks show that I think the community desired. And again, thank you to the council. None of us do anything individually. Anything that we accomplish is a, is a collective effort. And that goes to the staff as well. They stepped up to the plate for the fireworks show. I'll end by saying, you know, it offends me at times when people say, ah, you're just a politician. I represent the people of Yuba City. I am their servant as a representative of the citizens of Yuba City. And I value that, that honor to serve. And I, I will continue to work my very hardest to leave it better than I got it. And again, really heartfelt thanks to the, to the four colleagues of mine up here. Thank you, Mayor.
Very well said. Thank you very much. Anybody else care to say anything?
To the mayor. Well, want to congratulate you on round two.
Thank you.
We had an exciting first year. Let's keep it a little bit mellower the second year, okay? Also, I would like to thank staff for everything that they do for us. I would also like to thank my family and also my girlfriend, because I seem to tote her everywhere. And she says what's on the agenda for this week, and I say, here's four nights out of seven. You get one of them and I'm, I got the rest. I'd like you to be with me. So I'm very happy that she's with me and we get to do a lot of community functions together. And also for the council, thank you. And everybody, we got the mayor's polar bear plunge coming up here in about four weeks. And guess who gets to jump in the pool? But I'll be there with them. I will be there with them. So anyway, I had to get that in. I just had to. Anyway, thank you all for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny.
All right. You guys have already kind of summed up the year quite well. And if there's one word that could sum up this year, it would be change, because change has been constant from the time we hit the ground running a year ago. And I can tell you, looking back over the last year, there's not four other individuals I would much rather have sitting here than the four of you. As you said, we agree to disagree, but we come to a consensus of what's best for this community and what's best for Yuba City. And that's what makes this council very unique. And I think that's what has helped with the success that we've had this year, is each of us bring specific individual strengths up here. And we've had those conversations, open session, closed session, one-on-one, you know, Grace saying, hey, let's grab coffee over at Still House and saying, Dave, I see it this way. And I'm going, but Grace, I see it this way. And, but to walk away, understanding where each other is coming from. It's allowed us, I think, to handle the things that this city has had, which has been unprecedented in any history that I can recall, talking to past council members and mayors. There's not a single one of them that's had to handle all the things that we've handled this year. So thank you, guys. Thanks, thanks to the four of you. I just call everybody guys, but Grace, you're right there. It's, 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 it's been, it's been a great year. And I could not imagine four others to be up here with me. You know, want to talk about the citizens? I've seen optimism out of our citizens here in town. Used to, they would stop and complain. Now they stop and say, man, I see things going in the right direction. That speaks volumes. The team, I don't consider our staff, our staff, I've always referred to our city employees as our team. And that's the way I see it. And they're phenomenal. They are absolutely phenomenal. I can say now, right at 12 months later, I have such a deeper respect and a sense of gratitude and humility to our entire team than I ever did in the past, because I've seen what they can do. I've seen how much they care about this community. And I've been extremely impressed. And to our current E-team, you guys have endured a year like no other. You got three rookies in that, you know, it's kind of like unbridled Mustangs. We were out of the chute, here we go. Yes, we have horses. But, you know, we worked through it. We've learned to understand each other. Robin, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with you, where we went from not understanding to understanding, we are on the same page and it's who can outthink who the quickest in the financial realm? No. You're phenomenal. Thank you for your years of service. Diana, the guidance through the transition, words can't express. Thank you. The rest of our team, Spencer, Judy, Terrell, Natalie, Chief Landon. It's just, it goes on and on and on, you know? And Brad, I see you back there. Thank you as well. We have, yeah, he's back there. It's the dedication and service that you guys have stepped up to, because I know this council has put a lot of pressure on the E-team, because we took that approach. We don't need to wait two weeks or four weeks to come back. Hey, how's Tuesday? You guys are going, what do you mean, Tuesday? That's two days away. Well, we're going to do it Tuesday. You guys have been phenomenal stepping up. The last group that I would like to thank is my family, specifically my wife. Where, you know, Mark talks about his employer, oh, that's my employer right there, because that's my business partner. And she's not only loaned me from family, but she's loaned me from the office to be able to step up and serve this community. And I couldn't do it without her. And it's been a family year. And, you know, where you're saying, go here and go there, it's like, okay, where do I have to be and who's doing what? We figure it out, we make it work, because we care deeply about this community. I want to share one story very, very quickly of why we do what we do. And hopefully, the, the team member that shared this with me several months ago will see this and remember it as well. But ran into our team member and he stopped and he came back and he said, I just, I don't know if you can talk about it or not. But he goes, I just want you to know that the changes that you guys are doing inside of the city and what we've done as a council has made a difference in his life, in his children's life, in his family life. He loves coming to work. His family life is great again. And it doesn't matter anything else we do. If that's the only thing that we accomplished in year one, that was worth every bit of things that we went through. So that's the difference we're trying to make. And again, I just want to say thank you. Congratulations, congratulations. I look forward to going forward. We've got a lot more to do. And I'm really looking forward to what we're doing. And Manny, you are by far the greatest ambassador this city, I think, has ever had. You're at everything. You show up. You're, you're there. You know, we love Yuba City. So I just want to say thank you. Because when we can't be there, we know that you're there taking care of it. And I really do appreciate it. And thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm looking forward to the year ahead.
As am I. Thank you very much, Dave. Good, well said. Any comments down here?
Of course, I always have a comment to make. Come on. How can you, how can you question the fact of, you know that, Mayor? You know that best than the rest.
30 seconds.
I love that, Vice Mayor. Oh, I mean, Councilman Cardoza, now we're on the equal ground again. Since you started off, Cardoza, I had a whole other little spiel going, but I'm going to change it up, because I think that there's a, a good opportunity to kind of highlight some of the things that have been discussed this evening. But Manny Cardoza has been an employee of the city, along with our new vice mayor, Boomgarden, for many years. And his connection to the people of this city is truly to be admired. And sometimes, he cares more than, than, you know, he's like, oh, but I got to do something, Grace. And I'm like, okay, just remember, we're council people, we got roles, you know? And, but his heart is one of the most biggest in, in the community for, for the people that work within the city and in this community. He's the guy who will call you and remind you to show up at a certain event. And he's trying to rally people to show up. And I would love to go to all the kinds of events that Manny often does, but unfortunately, sometimes the time isn't always there. So Manny, I appreciate that from you and all, all the good love you give the rest of the world. Okay? So thank you. And Shaw, Councilman Shaw, okay, one question that I get asked all the time, what's it like to be on the council? Right? What is, what's it like to be on the council? I get that asked all the time. It's like, I'm the unicorn, because all the guys are up here and it's like, there's something different with this one. And so I get asked all the time, it's, what is it like? And I said, well, you know, there are good days and bad days. I guess it's almost like a marriage sometimes, right? We're not married, obviously. They all, you know, everybody's got their own thing. And, and then there's those days when we do celebrate and we're like, high five, I really enjoy that, I think that's awesome. But then there's days that there is really underlining undercurrent politics happening. And you don't even know it sometimes until you're sitting here and then all of a sudden you're reminded, I just got politic'd. Is that a word? So anyhow, but that has been kind of the scene for the last year. When we started in the beginning, this year was so challenging when our city manager drives, drops the mic in the first month of our beginning and says, goodbye. And we're like, oh, okay, now what, what do we do next? And so that's the question I get asked a lot. The other part of it is, how do you do the work that you do? How do you work with council members that sometimes have different philosophies? How do you work within the community that sometimes don't agree the things that you want to do and others want to do? How do you do that in the community? You do that with a lot of patience? You do that with a lot of, a lot of concern? You do that with a lot of respect? And oftentimes, there's a lot of communication that needs to happen. A lot of communication. It's not always a text, it's not always an email, it's a face-to-face conversation oftentimes in order to try to solve, what are those differences? What are those things that are, you know, keeping us on the two different ends of the spectrum, if that's a good analogy? But I really enjoyed, one of the biggest things that we did, well, in my perspective, I thought that we did is our goals and priorities. I really enjoyed that process within our community. And the reason that I really enjoyed that, because it was really inclusive. We invited everyone to be part of that process. And it was tough, because we were, you know, ideas from this end to ideas on that end. And Terrell took all of that and summarized it to our priorities. And if we... And if we don't have city staff that does the work like that for us as a council and for us as a community, we can't get done with the vision of this community where we're heading. So Judy, I want to say thank you, Judy Sanchez. You got to stand up over there, my lady. You're an amazing person. She takes care of us constantly as we walk in, whatever is needed. She's the person who's taking care of our council and takes care of everyone else as they're walking into the city. And then we also have Ben back there, who does tremendous work within our infrastructure, wastewater treatment, all of that. And then we have Natalie, who's back there from HR as well, who helped us navigate negotiations, which is kind of a challenging thing to do, honestly. But I want to say, Councilman Shaw, I have really appreciated you, the times that we sat down and had some really good conversations. And I think beyond where we're at now, I feel such a respect for you, and I appreciate that very much. And Mark, you know, he, Mark's like my buddy, solid, good man, always a solid, good man, and I appreciate that about you. And Mayor, I love the fact that you can collaborate, you know how to get things done, and I appreciate the fact that you navigated some things that have been really challenging and got us to the other side. So I appreciate that. And I really am looking forward to this coming year, because when you're into this, can you imagine the second year? It's going to be fun. So hold on, enjoy the ride, and always open to listening to whatever you have to say and share, but honestly, we can't do this alone. All of you in the audience and all of you out in YouTube, we can't do this alone. We ask you to join us and help. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Grace. Also, well said. I also want to acknowledge, I see that her little eyes poking over the top of Didi Brady's head, Judy Sanchez back there in the corner, trying to be literally that as always, kind of this, our fairy godmother, her and Terrell and Tricia back there, and then also behind, I don't, I don't know the gentleman's name, however, I see Natalie sitting next to Diana right now. Natalie, you also did so much work. When we talk about hiring all these people, and then, of course, negotiations, had to be more hours than we can even, no, even guess. So thank you for your very hard work and the thing you've done. Brad, I couldn't see you back there because of the glare, however, there you are. And I can say that, right? But, I mean, many, many things come to mind. I already made a comment about the, getting me getting bit by a feral cat, and your people over there really helped out, but with the mentorship program we're attempting to initiate, and also the pickleball tournament, with the, called the mayor's, someone won the mayor's cup pickleball tournament, which I thought was interesting since I wasn't wearing one, but that's okay. But come on, that's a joke. Anyway, no, you did put a lot of work into that, Brad, and you, and it wasn't even any hesitation, because that's just the way you are. It's always a can-do. There was another project I brought, I brought up to you recently regarding a theater, and no hesitation whatsoever, you stepped up. Yeah, sure, absolutely, we can, I think that was your first word, was absolutely. And for that, I thank you. Thank you very much. All of you guys are awesome, keeping the same theme here. But in closing here, and this is the end of it here, I too would like to go, first of all, thank you for your trust and confidence, and it's my, it's my honor to humbly serve another round as your mayor. Priorities have not changed, we've talked about it, there's many, many of them, but I know that definitely on our, on our many front burners, we have the homelessness issue. We already talked about the impact fees and developmental services, our Boog Stewart Master Plan, and of course, the impacts of a budget that always seems to fall short of where you'd love it to be, particularly when it comes to our roads. So with that being said, I also want to thank Manny for all the hard work that you do. I know this decision that you've came to, for whatever reasons you may have, was not done so easily. And I respect you for that, because that had to be a big deal. You are redcoat and all, a representative of Yuba City, and I've heard you described as, better than a red jumpsuit, but well, that's nothing. We can, we described, described as an ambassador. I've even heard you described as a mascot or even homecoming king for Yuba City. So he's, he's got all those, those words, and no one, I don't think even nationwide, can hold a candle to this man right here when it comes to showing up and serving pancakes and doing what he does. No one. So, you know, sometimes I wish you had a shepherd's cane, but however, he does, he does a great job at that. Again, no one can hold a candle to the enthusiasm that Manny Cardoza shares for our community and the things that we have here. It's very admirable. Respect isn't even the right word, Manny. So thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to serving with you, continuing to serve with you. All right, that being said, y'all, thank you for coming. Here we go for another year, and thank you very much. Have a great night.